Rachel, good evening. My goodness, that's lovely, isn't it? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Paul.
Right, good evening, everyone. Thanks for turning out on a lovely Portishead evening. Welcome to the first town council meeting of the new year. Happy new to everybody. It's going to be a good one. No pandemics, hopefully no more wars and generally good news. Right, we move into the agenda. Apologies for absence. We have apologies for my chair, unfortunately not very well. We wish her well. And I think Sue's not here at the moment, but is everyone else here? I think they aren't there. Yeah. Okay, I expect Sue will be along in a second. So declarations of councillor interests and requests for dispensation. So we have three councillors declared an interest in item six, which is the Lakegrounds Wheels Park, being Tania Slater, Ben Aldridge with pecuniary interests. I also got a personal interest. I've spent a lot of time recently helping with governor applications from various court bodies. Okay, so we will not be voting on that particular item. Any others? Simon? No. Any other things?
No, nothing else, no.
Alan? Nicola? Ben? Tim? Paul C?
No.
No.
No. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so in terms of the update, there's a couple of items there. So hopefully people have seen in the press on and online that the town council purchase of the Brackenwood Woodland area off North Road has been completed. And so it's great news. So it's obviously been bought as a community asset and saved from development or potential developments in the future. Simon and Ben are leading the work on what happens next. And I mean, nothing's going to happen in the immediate future. The first thing to do really is going to be to sort out and making the place safe because it's been left. It's not been maintained in the last 10 or 20 years. So there's some work to do on that. And just some initial engagement going on with local residents. Do you want to say anything else, Simon?
We've got an initial meeting with the local residents on the 28th of January, which is Saturday, where we're just going to listen to their concerns, say what our initial thoughts are, and just try and see if there's any issues that we can iron out. Would you agree with that, Ben?
Yes, correct. Yeah, nothing else to say on that one.
Thank you. Jenna?
Can I ask how you've contacted the residents? Because I'm one of them. You haven't contacted me.
I think Simon just said this. The initial discussion is with the residents who live in Brackenwood Gardens. It's the most immediate. People affected, there'll be, I'm sure, a cascade of other engagements and a public consultation at some point in the future. But the initial discussions were the people who live right next to it. Okay. Second item was the post office. So as we know, the post office is now closed. There isn't anything particular to report, except that it's been, obviously, we've got our MP, we've got North Somerset Council leader and the chief executive and various district councillors, as well as ourselves, putting pressure on the post office. But at the end of the day, the post office is a commercial organisation. So they are going through their process of trying to find someone and a premise in Portishead. So I don't think anyone's got any other update beyond that, but we're in a kind of waiting game at the moment. I think everyone's made it pretty clear that it's unacceptable not having a post office in Portishead. Any other, anyone else want to add anything? No, okay. So moving into public participation. So we'll start in the room. Anyone would like to speak? Lady in the red coat, sorry, I can't quite see you there. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Right, so, sorry, is it on, I see?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, would you mind just giving your name?
Sorry, my name's Beth Hobbs and I'm a resident of Portishead East. I am really concerned about the current level of the precept, which I know is later on in the agenda, and I'm worried that it may increase further in your meeting tonight. And I don't doubt that the considerable amount collected by our town council is good intentioned and destined for noble projects. But personally, we as a family would really struggle with further rises from both town and district councils. I know there's rises everywhere. But yes, we would really struggle. Surely in a time of financial struggles, including those families who earn, like ours, what might be considered a decent wage, decreasing the precept or at least maintaining it as current levels would be an easy way to help those in our community who are struggling and searching for ways to cut costs.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Following on from the last speaker, it's probably not surprising to councillors that I would like to address this issue. The precept has been tripled since this council came to power. My friend Ken told you it would, and it did. And now you want to put it up by the maximum amount you possibly can, by five percent. There's people in Portishead who use food banks. There's people in Portishead who are on the breadline. I would urge, as the last speaker, that the precept is actually reduced, certainly not increased. Why increase the precept just to pay some more staff members a few extra hours? There's people in Portishead who are going to struggle to pay this. It's okay saying it's only £5. Go to the local food bank and ask people there whether they'd rather give you £5 or whether they'd rather go and buy food to feed their children with. I'm pretty sure I know what the answer will be.
Just one correction, Paul. There is no limit on basically what we can raise the precept by. That only applies to district councils in unitary authorities.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I've got two meetings worth of whinging. A little while ago, it was a nice day, so my wife suggested we go down the lake ground. So down the lake ground we go, sit on the bench, and look happily across the channel. Lovely. But then this chap come and sat next to us. God, could he talk? And I didn't really want to talk. His main item, which I can't believe this council's stupid enough to do it, that this council is going to pay a million pounds to buy the lake. I thought, what about the million pounds it costs to do it all? I said, even this council, though I don't like it very much, would not do that. Surely if they're going to buy it, they would let North Somerset at least get it up together before they actually sold it. So I hope it was just this chap talking rubbish.
But we're not buying the lake grounds for a million pounds.
At least that's something. If you do that, the precept will be 10%, not 5%. I now turn to our useless North Somerset councillors. Can you attach to the minutes of this meeting what people like Charles and Kato and all these other people who represent us, what have they said to the executive and that council about the fact there could be 62 or 92 new buildings built and a whole new road? The question to ask is simple. What post office will they use? What bank will they use? There's only one, there'll only be one left. What school will the little children go to? And now that Gardena's full, what big school will the children go to? And the one that concerns me most, which doctors will they use? You promised in your manifesto that you would ensure the infrastructure of this town will be improved before there's any more house building. That has not happened. In fact, it's got worse. You can't even buy a suit of clothes now in Portishead. Now it's closed. So our town, our village and town centre is looking like a lot too many holes. And I agree, somehow I've got to get another post office back here. How they do that, I've no idea. But have these, have these councillors that represent us, or they pretend to represent us, but I can't see them doing anything for us yet in all the times they've been in power? What have they said to North Somerset? Because believe you me, North Somerset don't care too about Portishead. We're just a pain in the backside to them. And these people that represent us have got to be forceful and they've got to fight our corner for us. And I can't see people like Charles doing that because if they're more interested in wellbeing or something like that, I've no idea. But I really do think that should get stuck in. I mean, you look at council Kato. All you people here, or most of you, weren't like hell to get yourselves elected. I remember seeing you in the precinct. Was it twice or was it three times? But I saw you down there quite often electioneering, which is fair enough, that's what all this is all about. And then I saw you in that building in Slade Road. But in that time, I never saw Kato with you, not once, never. He got elected on the back of your hard work and he should be told that. Not only that, he's not an independent, he's a Green. Nothing wrong with that, but if you are, at least admit what you are. He also appeared on the big photograph that really pleased me, the first thing that's done that ever pleased me. Because a long time ago, a nice summer's evening, a lady of slight stature stood up and told a story that brought total silence to the room. I didn't believe it. I didn't believe that officers at North Somerset could do that to us. And this lady came back month after month after month. You know what I'm talking about, don't you? And the shame of it, my party, they stopped to get in information, they stopped to approaching the subject. And the subject was, as you all know, it was a madman on the golf course who wanted to pour tonnes of rubbish onto the place. How she found this out, I've no idea. But I'm thankful to her for what she did to save that man and doing that. But at least you did have the courtesy to put her in the picture when it was in The Times. I thought you might ignore it, but you didn't. You put her in the picture and that's all part of your elbow. But you also put Kato in the picture. Now, what's he going to do with it? He got into power on the backs of your electioneering. And he should be told that. Never once did I see him with you. Never once. And that rests my case. Thank you.
Ben, did you want to say something?
I'd just like to point out to Mr Smith that councillor Kato is one of the hardest working councillors at North Somerset Council. Ken, I let you speak. He is one of the hardest working councillors on North Somerset Council. He is the chair of the audit committee and last night, one of the audit committee was commending him again on his hard work. He has taken that committee, he's basically taken it from being a rubber stamp committee to making it work properly, to making it actually do what it's supposed to do. He spends more hours than anybody I know. He has more than a full-time job as far as he's concerned. And just because you don't see him at these meetings doesn't mean he's not doing anything. And as it comes to planning, councillor Charles and myself last month's meeting, we spoke very strongly about the Slade Road issue, about the Slade Road issue. In the minutes in here, well, if you read the minutes from the North Somerset Council meetings, you'll see what was said.
Okay, I think we're not getting into a signing match.
But I don't want to hear any words said against councillor Kato. He is, he's one of the best of us. But he's not one of Portishead independents. He got elected off his own back.
You stopped shouting at me. Did you want to say something?
No, thank you. I just wanted to back Nicola up with John and also mention that John was actually, along with Janet, heavily involved in the, Nicola will know more than I will, but in the golf course. He was actually chair of the working party that got the golf course awarded town and village green status. He was the one that worked with Anne and myself and Paul and Janet and officers at the council to get town and village green status on the golf course.
Okay, I think we've covered the topic and then we need to defend John, to be honest. So.
Raina Knight, I've got a couple of little things. It's very easy to put up the precept. It's not easy to save money. And quite frankly, when you started this term, you had a lot of money. I know that for a fact. And where it's gone to is a bit a mystery. The amount of staff you have now has really increased. So maybe that's where it's gone. I'm not sure. But a small, a very small thing, but a very important thing to me, is when our Queen died, we put a flag up on the pole that had holes in it, was tatty. And I'd like to ask you whether you have now bought a decent flag to represent this town, because I think that was a disgrace and should never have been done. The only other thing I would say is the one thing you kept saying when you were standing where I'm standing is transparency. You are not transparent, nowhere near it. And if you want transparency, you've got to do it yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a new flag flying. It's outside tonight. It's probably flying quite well tonight. But people online, does anyone want to speak? We'll come back to, in just moving around a bit. So anyone online like to speak? No? Okay. Rachel?
Hi, everybody. Rachel Nash. I'm actually the project manager for the WOSP group that's doing the wheels and skate park. And I just wanted to come along tonight on behalf of the WOSP group just to thank Portishead Town Council for all your support you've given us for the last 12 months. I think there's a lot of things we couldn't have done without your support and help in negotiating a few of our hurdles that we've had. So I'm just here to say thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. That's much appreciated. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number five, sorry, item number six. So to Ken's point, one of the pieces of community infrastructure that we're very proud to bring forward is the Wheels and Skate Park, which is obviously the site and which many, many people have worked on for many years. So it's, it's very nice to be at a point when we can hopefully move to the construction. There are two sub items. One is a maintenance and management plan. So as people are probably aware, the town council has taken a lease on the play area, which is the area of the lake grounds, which is bounded by the blue railings between the cafe and the boathouse. So obviously that already contains the play area and part of it. And we were successful in a grant application to North Somerset, which resulted in them investing £25,000 and we're putting in £25,000 batch funding. Work's just about started on actually putting in some inclusive play equipment and improving the play area. So probably, well, a very welcome, but probably should have been done some years ago. But anyway, it's good to see it happening. So we need to have a maintenance and management plan to obviously look after the whole area. So it covers both the play area and the skate park. The, and the management plan sort of piggybacks on the North Somerset management plan because it's obviously a subset because we're a leaseholder of that particular area of the lake grounds. So that's, that's item one or item A to avoid confusion. Item B, Mr Gre, some additional funding of up to £40,000 from our SIL funds. So that's the Community Infrastructure Levy Fund, which is levied on houses that are built in Portishead. We get a share of that. As it says here, the total cost of the Wheels Park construction is around £360,000. So the WOSP group and the town council have been working together over many months to raise funds and today we've got going to around £340,000. There's been 500 donations from the public and local businesses plus several significant grants. So in fact, the National Lottery had a meeting with Wendy Penner and myself today. Which went very well. The National Lottery is putting in over £100,000. The, we have a large grant from the Goga Environment Trust and North Somerset Council is putting in £50,000 as well. So PTC, as we know, is already approved to match funds up to £50,000 with whatever the community raised. The WOSP group have in fact raised more than £60,000. So they've surpassed that target. There is a shortfall of up to £40,000. It's about £20,000 plus in contingency. Obviously, there may be some items that we have not yet thought about, which kind of happens with pretty much all large projects. So the request is to allocate a maximum of £40,000 from the SIL fund to cover A, the shortfall in the construction costs and B, an allowance of around £20,000 for additional landscaping work and any unexpected costs. So those are the two items. Ben, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you've probably said all there is. I'll kind of leave it to you guys now.
Okay. So unless there's any, is there any comments from anyone else? In that case, we'll move to the vote. So just to be clear, I'm not quoting on it. And always Tania and Ben, so I need someone to propose the motion. Nicola got the first, someone to second it? Well, I'll give you a second. Right, so can we move to the vote then, please? All those in favour? So that's unanimous with three abstentions for the reasons I identified earlier. Thank you very much. Ben, did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, just kind of a brief statement on behalf of the kind of WOSP group, kind of following what we've all kind of achieved over the past years and not just us, but other people. This statement will be going out live on social media, internet and to local press following this meeting. And it reads as follows, "We've only gone and done it. We are so excited and pleased to announce that we have hit our target, raised all the monies needed to get on, get on building our new Wheels, the skate park here in Portishead at the Lakegrounds. We couldn't have done this without your support and your generosity. We'll be breaking ground in the next couple of weeks. So do keep an eye on our Facebook page and website for the date. We would love to see you all there before the site becomes inaccessible to the public, up to due to health and safety reasons and safety fence and all go up. Our builders, Maverick Skate Parks, will then begin building the park on the 31st of January 2023, which means it should be completed by mid to late May 2023 in time for the summer holidays. We'd also like to recognise and send a huge thanks to the previous groups that have worked so hard to try and bring the Wheels Park to Portishead over many years, including Lisa Stanley and the PSP Group. We'll be planning an opening ceremony for when the Wheels and Skate Park is built. In the meantime, we'll be organising an evening of celebration at the end of February to early March. So watch out for information coming on the relevant social media, internet, et cetera. I just kind of want to say, you know, there's so many people been involved in this. I could literally list the names and reiterate all night, but there are so many people that may not be in Portishead anymore, that have helped out in this, are in Portishead. An absolutely massive thank you to everybody. Everybody's wanted this skate park for years. It's been hindered for a variety of reasons. We all know why. I'm not going to go into that because it's pointless. We're actually going to get there. This thing is going to be built. So roll on summer 2023 where Portishead will finally have its name on the map for Wheels and Skate Park for the kids to enjoy. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, move on to item seven, which is the budget. Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, I know there's a few of you at the back that are here, but we're here for that. So if you don't want to hang around for the for the rest of it, honestly, don't feel like you have to.
I've been practising for ages. It's going to be brilliant. Right, let's see whether technology is going to work. I'm sure it will. There's never in doubt. Yeah, yeah. We're displaying a presentation. Hopefully the people online can see it. Can you just check? Someone just shout out if you can see it or not?
Yes, I can see it. Thank you, Paul.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, so this is the budget presentation for the next financial year, which is 2023 to 2024. Okay. Okay, so obviously we've throughout the period when we've been in office, if that's the right phrase. Obviously, what we're going to do is provide value for many services and outcomes for our residents. So we always try and do that as effectively and efficiently as possible. And we'll see in obtaining other funding options such as inward grants is a big part of that. So we have been successful in getting several hundred thousand pounds of inward grants over the last four years through a lot of hard work from the staff and other people. So that's great. Obviously, what we want to do is support local community groups with grants and enable community organisations to get on and do stuff for the community rather than the council always doing things because it's a much more efficient, cost-effective way of doing it. And obviously, we want to make sure that we have the right level of reserves for a rainy day, which there are many, been many recently. So where are we? As I've said, we continue to live in three turbulent times, which is what it said last year, but it's not really got any less turbulent. So we're dealing with very high inflation, rates not seen since the early 1980s. We've seen shortages of goods and labour, which have impacted on the delivery of some services. It's the same obviously as the rest of the economy. And there are major challenges getting stuff done. But despite that, obviously, there's been some great stuff for the town. So we've got the community hub, which has been running for six or nine months now. We've just talked about the Wheels and Skate Park and Brackenwood, just some examples. So what we wanted to do is deliver positive change while being financially prudent and having strong financial reserves. So that's what it's all about. Obviously, as speakers have mentioned, we are in the middle of a cost of living crisis. It's having a huge impact on pretty much everybody. So proposing to create an emergency cost of living fund of £100,000, which is going to be targeted at most, most in need. We'll come to that in a bit more detail later on. But as I said earlier, it's all what the way we most effectively help people is provide grants, seek funding to community groups. So this slide we've shown every year because there can be some misconceptions about precepts. So the town council precept is actually quite a small proportion of your overall council tax. So these are based on last judge values. I've done a slide for this year because we don't know what the North Somerset council tax can be. But you can see the precept is around a 4% of your total council tax bill. Most of it goes into the North Somerset general pot, 70%, and this is the additional adult social care, which is 9.3%. um adult social care, which is nine point three percent. Uh. Last year, uh obviously some money goes to the fire service and twelve point eight percent goes to the police. That's how it breaks down. So we have a small share, but the the good news is that all the money that comes to the town council is spent in Portishead, so we can do a lot with it. Okay, um. Bob's favourite slide. Um. This shows what happened to the preset over the last sixteen years now. Um. Clearly, it went, it went down and down and down, both in kind of real and inflation terms. Um. So when we came in, there was virtually no money to do anything. Um. So and I think we would have probably gone bust during Covid if we'd not put the preset up. So it's fortuitous. Um. The um. So that's basically where we've been. Um. Um. The uh since two thousand nineteen, obviously, the preset has gone up so that we could uh invest in projects. It's what people in the town asked us to do. Remember, we had a consultation in December two thousand nineteen. Uh. I think seventy odd percent of people asked us to put preset up on the maximum that we proposed. We didn't quite go to the maximum actually at the time. Um. Proposal this year is for one pence a day increase, which would take the preset eighty three pound thirteen or a bandy house, a bandy house being deemed an average on a three bedroom semi sized house as far as the uh tax authorities and all this. All right. So we'll come to that in a bit more detail. But what we've done, we've reduced project spend, operational spend and costs. Um. And so we can create a community fund to get help to the people who need it. Um. The some of the numbers, uh if you follow this slide, which is reasonably complicated, if you saw in the middle, we saw in thirty first of March, so we reserves of eight hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh. This year, we forecast to spend one point two three million. Um. And which would give you a reserve position of five two seven, which is in the middle. Um. People can see that. Uh. And then the budget forecast for this year is the with the presets that's prepared, we bring in eight hundred and sixty six thousand seven hundred pounds. We expect to get probably around thirty thousand pounds in sell money based on what we've received in previous years and know what building's been going on. Uh. We have some income from amenities and holes. Um. And we have regular operational costs, which is covers administration, election costs and staffing, building costs and so forth, various maintenance activities. Um. So they've been reduced. Apparently, staff costs are probably down about fifty or sixty thousand versus the run rate for this year. Um. And we have project costs and grants. So they've been reduced to to create the cost of living support fund, which is towards the bottom of the slide. And if we if if we spend against the budget, we will end up with reserves of three hundred and eighty five thousand at the end of March twenty twenty four. Okay. That's the numbers. Um. So that still leaves us well within line with local government good practice. Rachel herself, our responsible finance officer, is on the ball. So she's obviously been through this and is happy with it from a um financial governance point of view. Um. And then the last point, Bob's favourite word of the year, isn't it? Environment. So we changed our regulation, uh financial regulations last year. Verement, sorry. There you go. No idea what it is. Um. We changed, we changed our financial regulations to make sure that it's in the regulations to have a six monthly review to make sure that we are on track against budget and make any adjustments that we need to obviously within the overall spending envelope that we've got. All right. So that's the summary. Um. Just for people to, because if you not necessarily know what the town council does, there's a lot of obviously legal regulatory compliance work, planning applications which are mentioned, obviously what projects. Um. We can making sure that the uh can help local businesses, community groups um provide financial support and so forth. We've obviously had a number of consultations. And there's a lot of um things to look after, like the halls and the lawnmower street lights, bins, shelters and so on and so forth. So there's a, there's a big mix of activities, many more than I knew about before I became a councillor. Um. So just to go through a bit more detail. So obviously, as well as projects, there's just a whole bunch of bad hope stuff that comes in the office, around seven hundred and help inquiries again. Um. Anything, there's a lot of antisocial behaviour at the moment, which Alan's been dealing with. Um. And just obviously the bus services. Um. There's lots of common, lots of stuff around the post office at the moment, as well as the sort of regular uh type of queries that come in, some of which can be answered quite quickly, some of which actually turn out to be quite complex in dealing with. Um. So one hundred and sixty three calls logged in the, this is in the eight, eight month period from April to November. So that's about seven hundred a year. Um. As I said, there's been a lot of ASP and some vandalism, that's both talk, both set of toilets, public toilets. Obviously, we've done satisfactory cuts in bus services and parking and somebody other lines have also, have also been a feature. So there's a lot going on. The summary of that. Um. So in terms of the cost of living support fund. Um. So what we've come up with is a hundred thousand pound of fund. Um. Which is saying has been created by reducing costs in other areas. Um. Exactly how it's going to be allocated is going to be worked on, assuming this gets approved. Um. It's it's a fund solely to support residents in Portishead who are struggling financially, so to pick up on some of the points the uh speakers made earlier. Um. So it's kind of similar in concept to an existing fund, government sponsored called the Household Support Fund. That ends in March two thousand and twenty three. But also the main difference is this fund is solely to support Portishead residents. Um. Just to make it clear, it's separate to the existing grant fund, which remain in existence, and that does other things like supporting groups such as Christmas lights or Western Air Ambulance and so forth. Um. And as I said earlier, we continue to work with those with agencies and groups because obviously the key is is that the help gets to the right people at the right time. Um. We have a wellbeing coordinator, Laura, who's doing, who's been with us probably about six weeks now. She's doing a fantastic job in getting everyone organised around wellbeing. Obviously, she can help make sure that the funds do get to the right people. Um. And if any members of the public would like to help um manage the fund or get involved, they'd be very welcome. I think, Janet, do you want to end something?
Um. As Paul has just said, this cost of living fund is distinct from the normal grants fund as this fund is here to help people that are most vulnerable. The question is therefore, how do we know who these people are and how do we reach them? The council already has, as a legacy of the Covid Response Initiative and the Community Renewal Fund, which where we applied for a grant, received fifty five thousand pounds to set up a wellbeing, wellbeing initiatives for the town. We made connections to be able to reach a wide number of people. We also have a wellbeing partnership where local schools, GPs, churches, social providers and other groups, including health services and the health visitors. They provide services to people in the community. And we're able to get together both online and in person to discuss ways in which we can support our community. Tomorrow, we have a meeting for the wellbeing partnership, but this time we've extended the number of groups that are being invited so that we can offer help and support to a wider group of residents. The fund is there to help people who are in great need as a result of the cost of living crisis. And we believe we have a wide enough base already to be able to great, help the greatest number of people. People will also be able to apply in person. We have the mechanisms in place to direct them to long term help as well.
Uh. Thank you, China. Thank you. Okay, so as well as the Community Support Fund, we have, there are three main other areas. Um. So basically, the P T C strategy, which we put together in two thousand nineteen, twenty, has three main pillars, which are wellbeing, sustainability and prosperity. So we've kind of just taken out some of the things we're looking to do with the money um in the twenty three, twenty four financial year. So there's obviously some ongoing improvement in maintenance of the Lake Grounds play area. Um. The skate park uh should be finished, but um there'll be some ongoing work, no doubt, in terms of uh opening events and getting people involved. Um. So there's other, some other investment in other play areas and um Slave Road Woodland play area, which is also um having some improvement western and on it at the moment. Um. We've got some money there for additional CCTV camera to deal with the antisocial behaviour in the marina um and more regular items in terms of grants to the Centre of Citizens Advice, Portishead in Bloom and community transport. So that's now the district transport there. Okay. So there's quite a lot of investments still in wellbeing projects and grants. Um. Sustainability, the neighbourhood plan uh is currently being reviewed by a planning inspector. So again, thanks to all the residents who were involved in putting that together. It's quite a long process to get the various reviews done. So we're expecting the planning inspector to come back actually this month without any comments. Um. But there'll be some, the the neighbourhood plan needs to go to a referendum, so that will probably happen sometime in the next or I believe this calendar year, which will be the next financial year. Um. We have the Blackwood Woodland. Um. So investing some money in making it safe and accessible, which you spoke about earlier, and obviously we may need to preserve uh further of our green spaces. The North Somerset Local Plan is due to come out sometime uh this year, Alan's year, I think. I know there's been some delays um due to changes in government policy and such like. Um. Again, so you'll see. But anyway, there's some money in there to deal with those things when they arrive. Um. And then on the prosperity side, there's some work to make sure we keep the town looking uh looking good. And um so the uh and then we also got the very successful community event. Um. Which is now being renamed the Coronation Penny Festival. So there's some money for the prosperity and so forth. Okay. So any comments from councillors on that project? Hi Roger. Yeah.
Hmm. Hi. Excuse me. I've 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 had a bit of a cold. I've got a bad throat. So if it gives out halfway through, I apologise. Um. Yeah, we've, I mean, we've, we've all had lots of discussions about the the budget for this year. Um. And and whether or not it benefits people and who it benefits to set a a zero increase in the budget, which of course benefits everybody, even those people who have plenty of money and and are not struggling. Um. And we've tried to balance that. I mean, we've, we've seen a ten percent increase in inflation, which means that the council's costs have gone up as well. Um. So that needs to be reflected somewhere, which which it is. And I think what we've done is we've come to a balance where we we've got a reasonably small increase. Um. And in return for that, we've got some targeted funding to go to the people who need it most in the community. So I think as as the budget stands, um I think it's an excellent piece of work. I know there's a lot of work going on this behind the scenes and and I would be happy to support it.
Okay, thanks Roger. Yeah. Bob, do you want to say anything? You've done a lot of the work. Did you want to say?
No, I think you've said it all.
Okay. All right. All right. So we have sorry, Bob too.
Um. Sorry, it's a bit loud. Um. Going back to Beth Hobbs, um I totally understand you. Um. I'm in the same predicament. Funny enough, being a councillor doesn't mean to say that I earn lots of money. I'm on just above minimum wage. My partner is on minimum wage. We have a mortgage. We still have um a daughter that's still at home all day. She's working. Obviously, she doesn't pay a lot towards the house. Um. When it comes to the money for this preset, um I think it's valuable more than we actually realise. We all know that um North Somerset Council have already stated that there'd be going to be a lot of cutbacks. Um. I think the pressure will come on the local town councils, not just Portishead, but the entire North Somerset Council uh area. And um I think we've been, we need to be there for the public. Um. And we should be supporting. I myself have already contacted the food bank and it is embarrassing. Um. But lucky we haven't really got to that stage where we've had to go down there ourselves. But um just doing it, I can understand how people feel. And it is a sad thing to do that we are forced into that. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Sue.
Thank you. Um. At the moment, I'll I'll say very little. But what I would say is that I do know that the office and everyone else has worked very hard on um working out all of the figures. And I personally would like to thank Rachel and Wendy and the office team for all the work that they have put into this um, you know, this budget and everything else. Thank you.
Yeah, seconded. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. 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 So move to the votes. We have two votes. And now we're just going to do the votes first. We'll take any questions after that. Um. So um the first vote is the first vote is the uh to consider and approve the budget for two thousand twenty three, twenty four. Uh. And recommendation that the budget is approved. Um. Paul, would you like to propose it?
Yeah.
Anyone like to second it? I'll second it. All those in favour? The budget, the actual. Yeah, the preset motion is second. The budget obviously is dependent on.
The reason I ask is is because I will be voting against putting preset up, which is why I'm not quite sure how I should vote on this, but on what you are actually saying here.
The budget figure is this one on this slide. So do you agree with the the figures on this slide? Okay. So all those in favour? Shall we try it again? Yeah, sorry.
Can I speak? And I might, it might help Sue.
Go on, yeah.
I'm not voting for it. And the reason I'm not voting for it is because the budget slide mentions the preset income. So that's why I'm not voting for the budget.
Thank you. That is.
All right. Okay, let's try it again. Say it's on. All those in favour? All those against? And um obviously, yeah, Paddy's not here, so that's why she's, that's why it's saying. That's correct. Who? Um. We're having to do two votes because Wendy advises this is the way to do it. So obviously, the next vote is for the preset motion, which is the last line. Uh. Which is to set the bandy property charge attributable to Portishead Town Council expenditure at eighty three pounds thirty per bandy household and subject to North Somerset Council agreement. So it's an increase of one pence a day, seven point six pence a week, three pound ninety six per year for each bandy household. Okay, which gives you the figure on the other slide of eight hundred and sixty six thousand seven hundred pounds on preset income. So all those in favour? Oh, sorry. Proposing, I'll I'll proposing, I'll second it. All those in favour? All those against? Okay. Thank you.
Um. Yeah, I'm not going to speak for long. Um. My fellow councillors will know my views on this. We've had long conversations. Um. I am absolutely one hundred percent in support of setting up funds to help our residents. I have concerns and they're my concerns and I know that they're not shared by everybody, but you know, that's my right. That the um the processes are there yet to make sure that the people that need that money get that money. Um. So I've always agreed with increases in the past. I criticised the previous council. I'm more than happy to say that. I criticised the previous council for debating, you know, a few pence here and there, but I but I think, and I won't have no problem with future increases. But I think this year with the way things are, to increase the preset, um I think it's it's almost a case of robbing Peter to pay Paul. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that people know why I voted the way I have, because I think it's only fair that I I explain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Final comment from Sue?
Oops. Yes, thank you. I agree with with what Tanya has said. I have thought very long and hard about this. But eve- even with this
But eve- even with this extra money that we are proposing to be available for other groups and everything else, there will still be people who will be just that little bit higher than perhaps, um, you know, so that they aren't able to access some funds. And I, and I believe that at the moment, an awful lot of people are struggling. They may not look at from the outside, but they are just managing. And, and I think that even if it is a penny a day, sorry, a penny a week, that still adds up. I know it doesn't sound very much, but for some people, it can make a huge difference. So that's why I have voted against.
Thank you, Sue and Bob.
And yeah, I, I totally understand you, Sue. Um, one thing, a big massive bugbear in this town, right? It's been raised by the old council and the new council and the public constantly, in fact, on a weekly basis, and that's the police. And the funny thing is, they're asking for fifteen pound off us next year. And we still have no full time police in Portishead. And that's no disrespect to our community officers because they do an amazing job, but they are absolutely stretched. So a three pound eighty quid, eighty p, sorry, the fifteen pounds, that's my, one of my arguments. And to be honest, if I could say no to the police, I would.
Um, Bob?
Yeah, just to be a little bit more information in terms of the hundred thousand pounds for supporting those that are suffering the most. We've already started trying to organise that and talking to people and how the current government sponsored system was running. My understanding is that it was the only uh justification that someone had to come with was that they were taking child allowance. And for those of you who have children, you'll know that that isn't anything to be ashamed of. Most people take child allowance that have children. We're going to run uh a number of meetings to try and make sure that those who need that money get it. You will see some significant publicity about the money. It is for individuals, it will be paid possibly through groups, possibly through the council. But it is for individuals as opposed to organisations, which is what the main grant scheme is for. And that's the significant difference between the two. But they all go to the benefit of Portishead.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, we can move on to uh item nine, so North Somerset. Uh, I'm not, um, Nicola, did you want to say?
One thing that was discussed last night at the district meeting was the future of Castlewood. Um, I don't know who knows about Castlewood, but it's not going to be there forever. Um, it's a very, very inefficient um building, badly built, um well, not badly built, but it's just incredibly inefficient, incredibly costly. And so we voted through um last night to um basically, we, we're trying to work out what to do with it. Uh, well, whether to sell the, sell the land to developers, whether to do it ourselves, um there's a commissioning process going through at the moment. Anyway, that's the main thing.
Yeah, thanks.
There was nothing on the agenda about Portishead, no. Because we don't have, we don't have any other business at district. If you have a look at the agenda, then anything you want me to bring up at the district meeting to do with the agenda, then I will happily do that.
Uh, thank you, King, thank you, King. Um, Tim, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just one little thing, um adult services, uh with the amount of people going into actual care homes due to the Covid have dropped down reduced. So now North Somerset is going to be taking a bit of funding out of the care homes and put it more into Dom Care because a lot of people now staying home longer and needing that support. And then going into nursing homes, not actually going onto the middle step. So that's the only thing really that's, has come up. Other than that, for Portishead, I've been chasing around trying to get drains cleared and chasing after dustbin men on various estates.
You live in the drain though, Tim, right, so Sue.
Um, if, if I can go back to the preset for a second, you did say to Paul Morkby that, that, that he would be asked, able to ask his question after the vote. And of course you missed.
I said later, so we'll do it later. Uh, so, and minutes of the last meeting. Um, so we need to consider approving the minutes of the last meeting. Um, so recommendation ten point one, so considering and approve the minutes of the full ordinary council meeting held on the ninth of November two thousand and twenty two and the extraordinary town council meeting held on the twenty fourth of November. Um, any comments on last minutes? Everyone can remember last year? Any comments? No, so they're approved. Uh, right, I'm doing it, Bob, sorry. Would someone like to, lots of will like to approve, uh proposing, Simon, thank you. And Nicola, your second? Thank you very much. So all those in favour of approving the minutes? Are you voting, Roger? Okay, yeah. So let's just be clear, anyone abstaining? Roger, yeah, thank you. Um, all right, so we'll move on to grit bins. Uh, so again, we live in the drain, um so we need some more grit bins, some of them have um reached end of life. So we need five new ones. And again, we should thank all the people in the community, have a look after them as well. Um, the five grit bins, uh so the recommendations of five grit bins will be approved and purchased at a cost of four hundred and thirty nine pounds seventy five. Uh, that comes from budget item four two four zero. Um, anyone like to propose this, Bob? Thank you very much. Tanya, second. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Uh, CCTV policy, um so part of the um, there's basically been some enhancements to the building, improve the security and also improve the access and um create some cost efficiencies as well. Part of that is having some new CCTV cameras uh installed. Um, and the policy's been updated in line with the new cameras coming in. Um, so the, so we need to agree the recommendations, which has already been through staffing and finance, um the updated policy. Um, so the recommendation that full council adopts the CCTV policy. Bob, do you want to comment?
Yeah, is, is there any chance that these um old CCTV units can be reused? They already are marvellous. That's what I like to hear.
Excellent. Thanks Wendy. Um, anyone like to propose the motion? Uh, Roger, got there first. Sue, would you like to second? Thank you. All right, so all those in favour approving the CCTV policy? Thank you very much. Yeah, Bob, come.
Just, just to clarify what it is, actually, this building is now fully covered in cameras and security lights, which it wasn't before. The other two buildings that we do will also be covered with security cameras. They all now have access codes. So people can come in, having paid and got the access code. So they'll come in um to use them in unmanned sense. That, the CCTV cameras can be viewed remotely. So if someone's in the hall and using it, we can monitor them as to what they're doing or not doing. And that is quite a saving on manpower, which unfortunately our friends won't be able to understand because they're not here. Um, but that is quite a saving in the cost of running the halls, which is something we've done to save money this year.
Yeah, we should thank Mike Cameron for doing a lot of work on this, it's been quite hard work actually, but he's done a great job. So thanks, Mike. Okay, um the next meeting of the town council is Wednesday, eighth of March, two thousand and twenty three. Let's hope the sun's out, it's not quite so blowing out there. Um, okay, the meeting's now closed. Thank, thank you very much. Oh, Bob.
Yeah, obviously, um, uh Paul and Kenneth left and I think they wanted to say something. I was just offering to the other residents that are sitting here, if they would like to say anything or not.
Okay, thank you. Anyone back? Yeah.
And so I just would say that, I know I campaigned against the preset earlier and, and I am saddened by the outcome, but I completely understand and the logic that you have gone through in order to reach and see if you have that preset. Um, and it's absolutely right that we should support those in our community who are most in need. And I know that I won't be among them and that's fine. Um, uh, and you will obviously have very strict criteria over who counts as most. Um, although actually anyone who has need should be able to access it because it's our community. And but what I would ask is in future, when considering your budgets, please consider those of us who are receiving just increases from the town council because a penny from you and then it will be just a five percent increase for, or however much from the district council and just an increase across the board. And actually, all of those just a little bit increases really do add up. And it's now a question of whether, you know, it sounds very petty, but from my point of view, it's whether I can afford to continue my four year old swimming lessons, which is a really nothing thing and, you know, sounds really petty and is very first world problems. But actually, my four year old loves them and he gets a lot out of them. And having to have that conversation where we're having to potentially deprive, I don't mind depriving myself of anything, I don't mind depriving my husband of anything, um but I do mind when it's depriving my children. And I know you're saying only one per day and that is totally understandable. And yes, I get your logic and I want to support those in the community because whilst we may be struggling, there are absolutely people who are struggling more. Um, but I would just ask in future, yes, there are people who potentially can afford it, but we'll still end up going without and we'll still be in need in some place. And you know, I'm coming from a very lucky position, I could be a lot worse, but actually I could also be a lot better. Um, it sounds very selfish, but I'm not the only one. And, and just thank you for all the time and effort you put into the budget and thank you for, you know, we benefited from the Beacon Hub. And one pound fifty toddler platters, those are revolutionary. And I've got two and they love, both love them, but um yes, thank you very much and, and.
Yeah, thank you for what you've said, appreciate it, thank you. Simon.
Um, I, I'd just like to add, thank you very much, Miss Hobbs, for your comments, it's, it's um really good to hear actually. Um, I don't think any of us came to the decision lightly. It, there was meetings, a lot of soul searching, a lot of um people saying their points of view and, and as has been done tonight. And I don't think we're ever going to get full agreement. However, we certainly feel, or I feel, that as a council, we've done the best that we can for the community, for the people of Portishead. And that's why we're here. We're not here out of any ego boost or anything. We're here to serve the people of Portishead. And I believe that that's what this has done and what this will do. Thank you.
Something.
Sam, Simon. Jana? You said it, not me.
One of the reasons I became councillor is to put things like, to help to put things like better play areas in for children. So that parents could, instead of spending money going out for um during holiday time, could actually spend time with one group of children on the skate park, another group of children on a much upgraded um play area and to take a picnic and have a free day out, instead of having to go somewhere else to have their day out. And that was one of the reasons why I wanted, particularly wanted the skate park, why I wanted an upgraded play area in the lake grounds and um to help families like yours. And one of the reasons why I wanted the um hundred thousand pound fund is because I do think that it's quite likely that families like yours might have to access it later on in this year, because I think things are going to be very difficult for people. And I fought for this, like everybody else did. And we've also got a wellbeing partnership where we can find out from GPs, schools, everywhere else that deals with people in this community, where these things are going to be needed, you know, like a child turns up with shoes that don't fit. Make sure that child has a pair of shoes. And for children like yours who wants to do swimming lessons, then um I'm hoping that we'll be able to support some children doing activities like that. And you're very welcome to apply.
We are all water park secret site. Yeah.
That's what we need is a, is a plan.
All right, okay, wait. Okay, I think we must close the meeting, right? Now formally closes the meeting, thank you so much for your contributions, speak to you also, thank you.